Okay, welcome everybody. Consideration of approval of the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk could call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Briesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
The agenda is approved as submitted. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the May 16 meeting discussion.
So moved.
Second. Clerk will call the roll.
Jaeger. Briesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
The minutes are approved of the May 16 meeting. Consideration of approval of the consent calendar and questions regarding the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk could call the roll.
Briesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved as submitted. Business of the mayor. We have several proclamations indicated here. We have somebody for the Relay for Life. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Connie Burney and I am the 2016 Floyd County Relay for Life co-chairperson. And these are some of my committee members. We would like to invite you to join us Friday, June 17th between the hours of 5:00 and 10:00 in Central Park for our 20th Annual Floyd County Relay for Life Celebration. Last year, over 105 family members and friends in Floyd County heard the words "You Have Cancer." For the first time, and an estimated 45 people in Floyd County lost their fight. This is why we relay. Relay for Life is a life-changing event that brings together more than 4 million people every year to celebrate the lives of those who have battled cancer, remember loved ones lost, and empower individuals and communities to fight against the disease that takes too much from too many. Many people ask us where do their fundraising dollars go. The majority of the dollars raised in Iowa go to Iowa City to support the cancer research done right here in our state. Also, it provides rides to treatments and appointments, head coverings or wigs, pays for lodging at the Hope Lodge, and provides help for the cancer information center that is available to anyone 24/7, and that's just to name a few. For a century, the American Cancer Society has fought for every birthday threatened by cancer in every community. We're determined to make this cancers last century and to finish the fight, not just in Floyd County, but for people everywhere. Thank you again for your support of the Floyd County Relay for Life. Please join us Friday night, June 17th, in Central Park from 5:00 to 10:00 as we celebrate our theme this year, Paint Your World Purple. Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you have any special activities going on there Connie?
We have a live band this year. We're hoping. We have the Palm Squad. We have the Palm Squad from the high school. We have the Boy Scouts with their pedal cars. The drum line's been turned south on the high school drum line.
Good.
We have Zoombo. We have quite a lot of things going on.
Good food.
Thank you all for your time you put into this worthwhile.
Thank you. And secondly, proclamation for Flag Day, June 14th.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate all of you taking your time.
Your name please.
Sean Hyde, Charles City, Elks Lodge 418. I'm currently an elected officer lecturing night. Flag Day, as you guys have all hopefully been to, and if you haven't, I would challenge you to come this year. We do it every year in Charles City. This year, we'd like to do it at Central Park, 5:00 on Tuesday, June 14th. We will be basically celebrating our flag. We're going to talk a little bit about the history. We've involved the Boy Scouts to help us with that. If you haven't seen it, it's quite an event. We have a patriotic speaker, a new member of our community. Patrick Irish is going to come out and speak for us and give his message about how important the flag is to him as a veteran. And I think he's a fourth-generation veteran, actually, serving our country. A big part of what the Elks do in town, besides have great meals out there on Friday nights that everybody's probably been to, is we help veterans, children. We constantly have scholarships we give out every year. We do a lot of things to promote patriotism, and that's what this Flag Day is all about. So if you'd come out and join us on June 14th at Central Park at 5:00, we're going to have live singing, good music, and definitely a little bit of history about the flag and just celebrate Americanism. Thank you for your time.
Okay. One clarification for sure. It's at 5:00, not 4:00?
It's at 5:00.
Any questions?
So moved for both proclamations, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk could call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Briesman.
Aye.
Okay, the proclamations are approved. I'll come down and read them one at a time. Okay, relay. Your timing is pretty good.
I'm a little bit overwhelmed.
You could've just come on in.
There you go, yeah, step up. Whereas the American Cancer Society is the nationwide, community-based voluntary health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem by preventing cancer, saving lives, and diminishing suffering from cancer through research, education, advocacy, and service. And whereas the lives of many of the citizens of Charles City and Floyd County have been touched by cancer, and thus they have been drawn to support the continuing research that will find a cure for the disease. And whereas Relay for Life is a community-wide event that generates support for families who have suffered the death of a loved one because of cancer. And whereas the survivors walk during the Relay for Life event celebrates with those who are living with cancer and offers them hope for continuing health. And whereas the luminary ceremony honors the memory of loved ones who have died of cancer, as well as those who were cancer survivors. Now therefore, I, James A. Ehr, Mayor of Charles City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim that the Relay for Life event be held on June 17, 2016. And may the citizens of Charles City and Floyd County support this event with great enthusiasm so that a cure for cancer can be found. Signed by myself. I think we're all very much aware of the impact and how much tragedies for many families in our area and community. And we are all obviously united in the hope to find the cures. I use the word plural because I think it may turn out to be a series of things, but I think we're making progress, don't you? Okay. So, thank you very much for your efforts in this regard.
Grab this one up here.
I was going to say, he's an elf.
I think he's hiding up there, actually. Whereas Charles City Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks Lodge Number 418 desires to hold the annual Flag Day observance at Central Park in Charles City at 5:00 PM on June 14, 2016. And whereas this grand commemorative event is a traditional ceremony with the participation of numerous American citizens, veterans, and local musicians. Now therefore, I, James A. Ehr, Mayor of Charles City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the observance of Flag Day on June 14, 2016, and encourage all our citizens to renew our allegiance to our flag at 5:00 PM at Central Park in Charles City. Signed by myself. I presume you'll bring this with you so it can be read at the event. Thank you very much. You guys do a great job. I've seen your work. One last thing. As a mayor, and I've had occasion now to do two or three events so far this spring and early entering into summer involving water quality and so on, and we're going to have some more events. I just give you, to make you aware that we're working on alliances with everybody downstream and upstream from us. And it has to do with the quality of the water coming into the wastewater plant and leaving it. So we're affected directly, and as everybody knows, we also have a grant that the city administrator is working to get into final form for implementation. So, just a heads up that we're, we are working on that. We're not reporting weekly or monthly, but it's going on. And I think that water issue will continue to grow in importance and probably be back in front of the legislature big time come next January. And with that, we next have a request for street closure for Relay for Life event, June 17. Discussion.
Close, Craig. Get excited. We like the enthusiasm, it's great.
I'm Karen Anderson and co-event chair with Connie Burney for this year's Relay for Life. And as you know, it's next Friday, the 17th. And we are requesting the closing of the three side streets of Central Park, Kelly, Jackson, and Blunt, for the safety of everyone that's going to be at the event, and especially on Jackson Street because that's where the Boy Scouts will have their pedal cars. So for, to make it a safe and fun evening, we would request that those streets be closed during, from 5:00 to 10:00 for our event.
Karen, how long is that for? The whole day, or?
Just from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
5:00 to 10:00?
Yeah.
I'd so move.
Second.
Any other questions?
Have you walked this through the police department?
Yes. I've talked with Chief, I've talked with Trudy, and I've talked with Steve.
Talking to a lot of people.
Yep. And I gave notice to the people that live on the Jackson Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Karen.
Clerk will call the roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Briesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Okay, the request is approved.
Have a good event.
Okay. Request for street closure for car show. Here he comes.
I'm Craig Hamm, and I was wondering if we could get the street just north of the church closed from 7:00 AM till 3:00 PM in the afternoon for a car show that Trinity Methodist Church wants to hold.
What date?
July 30th.
And you've had this in the past, wasn't it?
Last year, we had it, and it was a success, so they want to try it again.
Same thing, just talk to the police.
Yep. No, I haven't this time. I will, but I haven't. Last year, I did, but this year, I haven't yet.
That's important.
Yep.
Other questions? With police approval, I'd move for it.
Second.
Clerk could call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Briesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Thank you.
The closure is approved, subject to police confirmation. Request for 4th of July activities and street closures.
Good evening. Mark Wicks, representing both the Chamber of Commerce and Community Volization. We're looking at messing up your street schedule really bad here for a whole lot of fun, but Trudy has a whole lot of street closure requests. 4th of July celebration this year is going to encompass four days, July 1st through 4th. We have a full slate of activities scheduled during that time. We are requesting that Hewlin and Blunt on either side of Central Park be closed the entire time, if possible. We've got, the ban shall be in place, we'll have food vendors in place, banned vehicles. It would just make it a lot easier if we didn't have to worry about moving cars in and out every day. The Kids' Day on Friday, July 1st, the kids use that street to start their parade. In the last few years, it's been wall-to-wall. We've had that many kids. So it's really important that we don't have too many obstacles for them to walk around.
And Mark, you said Hewlin? Did you mean Kelly?
Kelly, I'm sorry. Kelly, thank you.
Sorry.
Kelly. I gave her all my forms, I can go look them all up. Literally, we're talking this thick. You should have a summary of what we're looking at. The parade route will be the same as last year and years past. We will be staging on 13th Avenue from Derailled all the way down to Cleveland and around the corner, the way it's been the last few years. We've had anywhere from 105 to 115 parade entries the last few years. That's great, we love it. We take up both sides of the street there. We have intersection control at East Street so that there is access, especially for emergency vehicles, to get through and so forth, even though we have a majority of the emergency vehicles actually in the parade. Going back to the park then, North Jackson Street is all bordered in Central Park. We're also asking it to be closed each of those four days, however, we will reopen. So that's not closed the entire time because we realize it is a main route. We will have the Boy Scout pedal cars there all four days. We'll have waterball fights on July 1st, we'll have pedal car races on July 2nd. And then they'll be doing just their rides as they do normally the last two days there. So we won't have it closed any longer than we need to, so we will reopen North Jackson. Usually, it should be reopened by 11:00 at night. And I think Saturday, we're not closing it down until 5:00. Or, no, I'm sorry, 3:00, because we've got to have time to get the vehicles that are parked there out of the way. So we close that down a few hours early. And then one, also doing the Firecracker 5K will be the morning of July 4th. That will require a number of streets to be closed, as has been the case in the past, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. The full list is there unless you want me to go over it. We had an incident last year where one of the intersections was, should have been manned, was not. We want to make sure that all these intersections where the runners cross the roadway and we have traffic are manned for safety reasons. So we'll be working with the police department on that, working very closely with Kathy Herrick from the police department. She's our volunteer coordinator. We have a new committee working on the Firecracker 5 this year. We're trying to improve it and get it to grow for the benefit of Charles City. And then the last request, which you do not have, I talked to Trudy about this this morning, this was my error, I forgot to include that in the pocket, would be the closure of the Main Street Bridge on Sunday, July 3rd for the fireworks show at night downtown. We used that last year, the same thing. By utilizing the bridge, we can shoot three-inch shells as opposed to the two-inch shells we can do from the courthouse parking lot. And that worked out really well for us last year, so we're asking for the addition of the Main Street Bridge closure Saturday, July 3rd from 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Any questions?
Were there any comments last year with using the bridge and having it?
We did not get any negative ones. There was a few people who were, gave us a huh, and had to drive one block over, but we got really positive comments about the show. And again, safety is our primary concern. We've got to have a minimum 210-foot clearance. And the shells are not fired, you know, they're fired towards the river, they're not fired side to side. It worked really well.
I'm just curious, Hugh or Steve, did you guys have any comments after last year? You remember?
I know, just a few negative comments about having to drive, go around and not being accessed across, but I think the positive comments I heard were far outweighed any negative. The larger shell is a nicer show.
And we'll be doing a public awareness campaign as we get close to remind people the bridge would be closed where the fireworks would be. Make sure everybody's aware of that. Same thing with the houses along, and businesses along the parade routes. I've already talked to some of the businesses right there on Kelly. They're okay with the closure as long as we can get them out the alleyway there, and they don't have any problem with it.
So, feedback, Hugh. Did you hear anything different?
Oh, we are mostly good. I mean, we have the normal. If we close a road for an accident, we get a lot of negative comments. I just have to drive a walk away, but we also closed the walking bridge during this, and that usually raises more hair than closing the Main Street Bridge because people can't walk across that, and they have to walk to one of the bridges.
Yes, and I've been subject to that before, and I did just fine. I burned off an extra 80 calories, and I managed it okay.
The overriding message we get is people like the fireworks show downtown. We want to do everything we can to accommodate it. Make it a good show, but we do have to have safety clearances. And the only way we can do the bigger shells is by closing down the bridge.
And there, people are satisfied with the, this level of shell as opposed to having even bigger ones?
And we've actually done some research on that. Des Moines uses three-inch shells. Three-inch shells are standard. You can get the ones much higher, but then, at the same time, you're losing a lot of the effect. So this is a pretty standard show. And the local people we have putting on the show, we're very blessed that we have them because they do these shows all over the state for J&amp;M displays, and they know what they're doing. And we actually benefit quite a bit, the fact that they are involved with J&amp;M. They do well for Charles City, getting us discounts and the best possible show we can get for the money. Thank you.
I'd so move.
I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce our new events coordinator. For those of you who don't know her, I said I'd give her a break and not make her do this tonight, but after this, it's all hers. So this is Erica Whiperling. Is there a new events coordinator? I think she's met most of you, but just so you can put a face, and next time, you get to heckle her when she's up here, so.
And we will.
And you will.
I had more fun heckling you, Mark.
I know you did. I told him you would. I said it'd be nice to you and give you a break. Again, we want to emphasize the fact that the fireworks show this year will be on Sunday, July 3rd, and not the 4th. The parade will be on the 4th, the Firecracker 5 will be on the 4th. The activities in Central Park after the parade will take place on the 4th. But by moving it to the 3rd, we can accommodate a much bigger crowd that's going to be here during the holiday weekend as opposed to Monday when they need to head back. And so far, we've gotten no negative comments from that. We've gotten a lot of positive that family members who are visiting are going to be able to enjoy it. So people have been pretty happy about that.
That's the reason why a lot of communities have kind of shifted that direction, too, is allowing for that.
If at all possible, we want to keep it on the 4th, but the way the calendar falls this year, Sunday night's going to work out much better. The municipal band concert, which is traditionally on July 4th as well, is also moved to July 3rd. They will be behind the library.
We had a motion and a second.
I missed who seconded it. You did mic, okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Clerk could call the roll.
Jaeger.
Briesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Okay, the request for approval of the 4th of July celebration is approved. Public hearing on Ordinance 1091, mending the zoning classification of two parcels located in Block 8 in the original plat of St. Charles, now incorporated as Charles City, Iowa, from B-2 General Business District to R-3 Multifamily Residence District and COS Conservation Open Space District, respectively. Open the hearing. Have any, an affidavit of publication?
Yes, Your Honor.
Any written comments or objections?
None, Your Honor.
Any oral comments or objections?
Move to close hearing.
Second.
Good luck with that one, Trudy.
Clerk will call the roll.
Briesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Hearing's closed. Consideration of second reading of the Ordinance 1091. Discussion.
Yes, this is the second reading of this ordinance, and as we've discussed before, this is a rezoning request in the 300 block of North Jackson, on the west side of Jackson, between Kelly and Blunt Streets. And this is all caused by a rezoning request for the property at 305 North Jackson, so we looked at the zoning, the existing zoning along this entire half-block. The staff recommends that the zoning for the art center at Kelly and Jackson and the adjacent vacant lot immediately to the west of the art center be changed to Conservation Open Space, and this will match the zoning of Central Park immediately across the street. Then the remaining two parcels at 305 and 307, North Jackson will be rezoned to R-3 Multifamily Residence District. Now, the Planning and Zoning Commission, they held a public hearing on this matter at their meeting on May 11th, and they have returned a recommendation of approval except for this zoning, rezoning ordinance. So, and the city council that you did approve the first reading of the ordinance at your last council meeting, you just held a public hearing prior to this action, so we'd recommend approval of the second reading.
Questions?
Have you had any comments?
I have not had any comments.
Okay. Curious. You either, Steve, or Alex.
Either way. You publicize this somehow so the people who are affected would know that it's being done?
Yes, there's a mailing that goes out.
Okay.
Is that the 200 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd so move.
Clerk could call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Briesman.
Aye.
Second reading is approved. We'll have the second reading.
Ordinance Number 1091, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of two parcels located in Block 8 in the original plat of St. Charles, now incorporated as Charles City, Iowa, from B-2 General Business District to R-3 Multifamily Residence District and COS Conservation and Open Space District, respectively.
Thank you. Public hearing on Ordinance 1092, amending Section 4's general provisions of the Charles City zoning ordinance by adding a new subsection to allow ramps and other structures providing accessibility to residential structures for handicapped individuals in situations where such structures might otherwise violate provisions of the zoning ordinance. An open the hearing. Do we have an affidavit of publication?
Yes, Your Honor.
Any written comments or objections?
None, Your Honor.
Any oral comments or objections? Move to close.
Second.
Clerk could call the roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Briesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Hearing is closed. Consideration of second reading of Ordinance 1092. Discussion.
Again, this is a second reading of this ordinance. Now, this ordinance will help streamline the building permit process and request for construction of handicap ramps into single-family homes. The handicap ramp is basically an extension of the front porch, and oftentimes, in order to get the correct slope on the ramp, these ramps have to extend out into the front yard, required front yard setback. And it takes a board of adjustment action to vary from this and to allow the construction to the front yard setback. Now, this ordinance adds a new subsection to Section 4 of the zoning ordinance, and that allows the zoning administrator to improve an encroachment of a handicap ramp. Now, the administrator's approval will be contingent that the ramp can only remain as long as the occupant of the house is there to use it. If occupants change, then the ramp will have to be removed within six months. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this matter at their May 11th meeting, and they've returned to the city council a recommendation of approval. Now, the council completed the first reading of this ordinance at your last council meeting. Now, the council completed the first reading of this ordinance at your last council meeting and you just held a public hearing on this and we'd recommend approval of the second reading.
Discussion, questions?
Can you give us any idea of how many requests in a year you might get for something like that?
Actually, I think like last year, there probably was like four.
Not very common though.
Not very common, but especially if somebody needs it right away.
It's, it's very, it could be very important. It's really to allow them an easier ability to get this in place. And I don't really see this as going to be an issue with enforcing removal, but we're not going to really have, I mean, what are we going to have in place to enforce that other than if it comes up and after the fact that this person hasn't lived here for five years, you know, and then just say, hey, you gotta take it out? I mean, yeah, yeah, I don't see, see that we're pursuing.
Probably like most things, it'll just be something that will come up, but at least that way, it's, it's in the ordinance.
And this is more about allowing them to be built, more than anything else to allow the easier access into a private residence this way.
The notification will probably come by a phone call from a neighbor.
Exactly. I'd so move. I'd so move for 1092.
Second.
Further questions or discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Starr, Jaeger, Friesman, Hammond, Malero.
Okay, the second reading is approved. We'll have the second reading.
Ordinance number 1092, an ordinance amending section four general purpose provision, excuse me, general provisions of the Charles City zoning ordinance by adding a new subsection to allowing ramps and other structures providing accessibility to residential structures for handicapped individuals in situations where structures might otherwise violate provisions of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Consideration of resolution 47 dash 16, approving contract with Itron for water meters. Discussion.
Yeah, Itron is the, is the maker of the new water meter readers that are coming with the Badger water meters that we are switching to. And this agreement here is something new. We didn't have it before with our previous supplier. But this is our, the sales agreement and contract we have with Itron for use of the, the water meter readers. And Ralph has reviewed this. It's a pretty, pretty standard contract, pretty standard their way, of course, but nonetheless, nothing out of the ordinary. So we would like to recommend that council approve this so we can move forward with purchasing the handheld device that goes with the water meter readers, because once this is in place, then we can obtain that device and continue to, to install and utilize the, the new water meters.
Further questions or discussion?
As I remember correctly from the workshop, there's kind of a small portion of this contract that really affects us now at this time because we're really looking at the field collection software.
The cloud?
Yeah, yeah, we're not worried about the cloud and all of that sort of stuff at this point.
Correct. Yeah, there, there is an option to go to a, to a completely remote reading system that will, this system here, you, you drive around the community and it pulls information in. You can go to the next step. It's a pretty big step, but you can go to the next step where it'll completely upload and download remotely at city hall and you don't have to drive around to do it. But that's probably more where the, the cloud services will come into play. Right now, we're just going to be uploading it to the handheld devices as I drive around and, and so I don't see the cloud being used in this.
I just remember when I read the contract for the first time, there's a lot of stuff in there that made me kind of step back, but we're not really getting involved in too much of that, so.
Yeah, our, our use is pretty simplistic to a certain extent at this point.
Other questions or discussion?
It certainly does beat walking around having to physically read each one.
Hope those days are done.
I would so move.
I'll second.
Clerk will call the roll.
Jaeger, Friesman, Hammond, Malero, Starr.
Resolution 47 dash 16 is approved. Consideration of motion, approving sale of MXU water meter readers to Clear Lake. Discussion.
Well, the XMU water meter readers are the readers that are installed on our current census water meters. And we've had mixed, mixed results with those meter readers. We have a number of them that have failed. We send them in to get repaired. The company tests them, they find them to be okay, they send them back. Sometimes they work for us, sometimes they don't. That's, that's what led us into buying the, going in the direction of the Badger and Itron. Clear Lake, however, has had, has just recently switched to census and using the, the XMU, MXU readers a couple of years ago and for whatever reason, they're, they're having fine success with it. So they are interested, interested in buying our used meter, meter readers, which we can't return. Our new ones we have returned, but the used ones we can't return. So they are willing to offer us $25 a piece. Retail, they're about a hundred dollars a piece, new. So we'd be getting back a portion of, portion of our, our cost in obtaining them. And this was something that actually clearly did similar thing with Mason City when Mason City switched from census and the MXUs to what they went to Neptune, different company, but I clearly bought those. And so we have an initial, initial lot of 130, which we'd like to sell. And we'll probably have more after that, but that's initially what we have and they're interested in taking them and we think it's, it's worth, worth pursuing.
Questions or discussion? No move.
Second.
Clerk will call the roll.
Friesman, Hammond, Malero, Starr, Jaeger.
Okay, the sale is approved. Consideration of resolution 48 dash 16, approving amended 28E agreement for Southwest Tiff District. Discussion.
And this is in something we've been working on as a Southwest Tiff committee for really about the last two years to a certain extent, one way or the other. And that's updating the administrative board, the draft and how the rules are laid out. And we've, we've listed some of the, the major changes that you're seeing from this process. And one of the, one of the main things that was talked about was that the Southwest Tiff Board would be the owner of property. Well, it was determined that, that since that board is just a recommendation board, they're not, they're its own separate legal entity, that they can't own property. And so we've changed it to read that if property is acquired, it's within city limits, it will be owned by the city. If it's acquired and it's outside of city limits, it will be owned by the county. So that was one of the changes that we made. There's also a change in the makeup of the board. The, it required the two representatives from the city and from the county be on the board. And the, the county is, would like to have two, would like a representation that doesn't constitute a quorum. So they changed that from having one board supervisor to one other official representative of the county, which at this time is, is the county auditor. City council, we, we currently have two, two council members that serve. We switched it so it requires one council member, but gave the flexibility to have anybody else within the city. Not the city proper, but the, the community, I guess you could say, within city limits. More than likely, they'll remain to be a council member, but it does give us that flexibility to change that in the future if we so wish. Those are the, those were the major changes. There's a lot of other smaller things that we changed and we've had a lot of discussion on this.
The ownership of property, if additional property is acquired, Southwest Tiff would acquire the ownership, but would acquire the property, but the ownership would be either city or county depending on where it lays, right?
Right. Ultimately, it would end up being the ownership of the city.
But the financial acquisition would be by the Southwest Tiff Board, I think.
As far as how we finance the purchase, I mean, that, that could be flexible, that could go either way. But ultimately, whoever's going to own the property.
Would be the city or the county.
The city or county based on whether it's in city limits or outside of city limits. And within the county.
But so somehow you got, can have joint financing even though you have only individual ownership. Is that right?
Potentially. I mean, the bigger projects, you know, it'll be beneficial, it's beneficial to have the county as part of this because of their bonding capacity, which is greater than the cities. But who ultimately owns the property? We realize that the Southwest Tiff Board cannot own the property.
Yeah, I, I say that because at least one of the possibilities is to go further south from that park and that probably will be county owned for the most part.
Correct.
Just under number four, Steve, you mentioned that one would be from the city council. The way this is written, it says, two residents of Charles City, appointed by the city council. But I, I was of the understanding, the way you said it, that one was going to be a city council person, but.
It's, yeah, one of whom will be a member of the city council. Comprised of two residents of the city of Charles City, appointed by the city council, one of whom will be a member of the city council. So the other one could not be.
Right.
Further questions or discussion? No move.
Second.
Clerk will call the roll.
Hammond, Malero, Starr, Jaeger, Friesman.
Resolution 48 dash 16 is approved. Consideration of resolution 49 dash 16, approving change order for sanitary sewer lining project. Discussion.
Well, Vision Sewer is this year's contractor, is the contractor for this year's sanitary sewer lining project. And this project involves lining approximately 5,500 lineal feet of 12 inch sewer mainly in the northwest area of the city as well as 660 lineal feet of 18 inch sewer by the O'Reilly Auto Parts Store. Now, Vision Sewer's bid for the project was 177,174 dollars. This was below our budgeted amounts available for sewer, sewer lining. And so in order to utilize the budgeted amounts and take advantage of the favorable low prices we received, we've worked with Dirk Utes in identifying additional sewer lining candidates. And so we've identified another 2,600 lineal feet of sewer that's in need of lining. Now, due to the sizable increase in the contract, we prepared a change order with Vision Sewer for council approval. Change order number one will increase the contract from the original bid of 177,174 dollars to 238,353 dollars, or an increase of 61,179 dollars. This will result in a total lining of a little over 8,100 lineal feet. So we recommend approval of this resolution of an approving change order number one.
Discussion or questions? The bids come in under budget at 161,000, no, 177,000, but we're adding 61, so that puts it over what our original budget was, right?
As, as a whole, we budgeted 270,000 dollars in that fund. And we originally earmarked 190,000 for slip lining, about 50,000 for manhole rehab and then some miscellaneous, I think, for 10,000.
An additional amount will come out of the operating part of that, the operating capital of that budget.
Right. The, the plan is we'll, we'll cut back on the manhole rehab work, which we're actually doing extra in this current fiscal year to get ahead for next year where we cut back. So we'll be, so we'll, we'll cut back some on, on the manhole work for next year and to make up for the, the good pricing that we got on the sewer lining. All cash flow to the sewer.
Further questions or discussion?
That's not a problem when we bid it and then add this much to it afterwards.
So move.
Second.
Clerk will call the roll.
Malero, Starr, Jaeger, Friesman, Hammond.
Resolution 49 dash 16 is approved. Consideration of the first reading of ordinance 1093, water meter ordinance. Discussion.
Basically, what this is, is in discussions with the water department and speaking with Corey out there, he, he requested that we make this change and what he's asking for here is to change the, change the code requirements so that when a meter is installed, we have a shut off valve on both sides of the meter. Right now, it's just on the, the city supply side. So when a meter gets changed out, you turn the supply off, you take the meter out and then you have the water from the, the house start to drain back and backflow and make a mess. And so in order to avoid that situation and avoid the draining of the pipes, we thought that adding it within the code to have that second valve put in when the meter, when the house is first initially built would be a minimal expense and pay dividends down the road. So that's basically what you're seeing here in this ordinance change is, is the request that a valve, shaft be, valve be placed on both sides of the meter during a new, new home construction. The plan isn't to go in and retrofit and do this, but just apply this to new construction.
And that's the time to do it. I mean, with most things, new construction, it's minimal as opposed to, as you said, we're retrofitting. So I'd so move.
Third, second?
Second.
Further discussion? I didn't catch that, Mike, but we're just talking about new construction, right?
That's correct.
So if there was some remodeling work being done and it was in that area, would it be required or just?
Not required. You might do so because it's a good idea. And then if your meter gets changed out, you don't have a big mess when, you know, whenever that happens, but you're not going to be forced to do it.
That, that's the only thing I'm wondering about is if we're kind of missing the boat a little bit by not requiring it to be more than just new homes.
Well, it's to the landowner's benefit to do it if you're remodeling, right?
Correct. But even, I mean, even when you're, even when you're remodeling, you're not typically going to be taking out a water meter necessarily.
Not doing that, right?
Where you're going to see it though is as we get into our meter, water meter replacement program and we're replacing.
Exactly.
So that's, that's what Elaine says, that, that would be time to do too, but then you get added, because that would be more on the plumber cost to get that installed, not our crew, correct?
Correct. And what we're talking about with the water meter, you know, change out is city staff going in, swapping out the meter. And so.
Yeah, because I need some work on, on, on my piping. That's the same thing as, got to get plumber in before that and then the city comes in to do their job.
Could you just print out a, a set of instructions and when they change a meter, they could give it to the homeowner and perhaps the homeowner on their own initiative would take care of that, increase the odds that it might happen?
I'm sure a verbal recommendation will be made, but a little leery of giving people instructions.
If you don't want this mess to happen again, please, please consider this. Yeah.
Some, some bump in the direction of doing that anyway, perhaps.
Initially, Corey did talk to us about doing it whenever there was construction involved in an old home too, but after some discussion, he, his recommendation was to just leave it for, for construction.
Yes, it's not really a, a code issue and it's, you're talking private, private lines that the homeowner really can do as they, for the most part, see fit. I can see where it'd be a tough issue.
Other discussion or questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Starr, Jaeger, Friesman, Hammond, Malero.
First reading is approved of 1093. Can we have the first reading?
Is that me? I moved for 1093? It is in the back. All right. Ordinance number 1093, an ordinance amending section 91.05 of the Charles City Code of Ordinances by amending provisions pertaining to meter settings.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I was already excited for the next item.
Consideration of resolution 50 dash 16, approving SRF application for UV disinfection project. Discussion.
Well, as we've discussed, we're closing out the UV disinfection project with the city. And what you have here is the actual application the city has to the FR, SRF program. We approved an amount not to exceed 1.79 million and our request is for 1.75. The application was reviewed and put together with the help of financial planner, Ron Fiscus, who's here tonight. And so he provided pro forma as required by the state, SRF loan application. And so we need city council approval to officially approve this application so it can be submitted and eventually closed on.
Further questions or discussion? Do you have anything?
You said. You said 175 or is it 1745?
1745.
45, okay.
Did I say 175?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 1745.
Making sure.
Oh, so move.
Second.
Clerk will call the roll.
Jaeger, Friesman, Hammond, Malero, Starr.
Okay, resolution 50 day 16 is approved. Thanks, Ron.
Correct, and what we're talking about with the water meter, you know, change out is city staff going in, swapping out the meter, and so.
Yeah, because I need some work on my piping, and that's the same thing, is got to get plumber in before that, and then the city comes in to do their job.
Could just print out a set of instructions, and when they change a meter, they could give it to the homeowner, and perhaps the homeowner on their own initiative would take care of that, increase the odds that it might happen.
I'm sure a verbal recommendation will be made, but we're literally giving people instructions.
If you don't want this mess to happen again, please consider this, yeah.
Some bump in the direction of doing that, anyway.
Perhaps.
Initially, Corey did talk to us about doing it whenever there was construction involved in an old home, too, but after some discussion, his recommendation was to just leave it for construction.
Yeah, because it's not really a code issue, and it's, you're talking private lines that the homeowner really can do as they, for the most part, see fit, I can see it would be a tough issue.
Other discussion or questions? Clerk, call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
First reading is approved of 1093, can we have the first reading?
Is that me? I moved, all right, for 1093? Oh, it is on the back, all right. Ordinance number 1093, an ordinance amending Section 91.05 of the Charles City Code of Ordinances by amending provisions pertaining to meter settings.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, I was already excited for the next item.
Consideration of Resolution 50-16, approving SRF application for UV disinfection project, discussion.
As we've discussed, we're closing out the UV disinfection project with the city, and what you have here is the actual application the city has to the SRF program. We approved an amount not to exceed 1.79 million, and our request is for 1.75. The application was reviewed and put together with the help of financial planner, Ron Fiskus, who's here tonight, and so he provided pro forma, as required by the state, SRF loan application, and so we need city council approval to officially approve this application so it can be submitted and eventually closed on.
Further questions or discussion, do you have anything? Okay.
You said?
Unless you have a question.
You said 175, or is it 1745?
1745.
45, okay.
Did I say 175?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 1745.
Making sure.
Oh, so move.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Okay, resolution 50-16 is approved.
Thanks, Ron.
Is it my imagination, is this the same kind of project where we tried to piggyback and get some extra financing for something extra, maybe not.
Well, yeah, I had the brainchild of trying to sneak in water meters on top of a sewer SRF, which, that doesn't work.
Did they frown on that, did they?
Yeah, they don't like, they don't like the co-mingle water and wastewater funding, it's just like we don't like to co-mingle wastewater and clean water.
Makes sense.
I try.
Here we go. Wasn't going to say anything, but Ron Fiskus, Plainscape Partners, just a little bit of clarification, you did use the SRF program exactly the way it's supposed to be used, and to the greatest benefit of your community. You received a planning and design loan, zero-interest loan, so while you're going through the process, you didn't pay any interest on that. Then you pay that off with the permanent loan, 1 and 3/4% interest rate for 20 years, and a quarter percent service fee each year for that, so you're effectively 2% interest rate. Great program. The Iowa Finance Authority does a lot of good work with this, and you've accessed that, and I know you have some other sanitary things, sanitary sewer things coming in your future, so having performed well on this one will put you in a great position the next time around.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
I think the numbers are going to be bigger next time around.
Consideration of the motion to appoint Delain Friesman and Keith Starr to the Joint Facility Subcommittee with Mike Hammond as alternates, discussion.
As we discussed at our joint meeting the other night with the county in regard to the Law Enforcement Center project, we're each looking to appoint various people to the Subcommittee to conduct interviews, and we'll help facilitate the process associated with the Law Enforcement Center, and during the meeting, Delain was gracious enough to offer his services on the Committee, and since Keith wasn't here, we also appointed him. No, we also thought that Keith would be a fine choice, and so Keith was nominated. I happened to speak to Keith before tonight's meeting, and unless something's changed, he's honored to serve, so, and then Michael Hammond has offered to serve as alternate, so it'll be a good Committee.
Yeah. Let's go move.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
The trio as named will serve.